Welcome to the District of Squamish Committee of the Whole Meeting for January 26. My name is Jenna Stoner, I'm acting mayor this month, so I'll be chairing this meeting. Hot Squamish, we salute last Squamish, O A Mayo. We are meeting as always on the traditional unceded territory of the Squamish Nation. Council, we have a slightly amended agenda before us that just came through, you may not be aware of it, but we're going to add an item at the end of our agenda to receive a resolution from council to support a grant application for the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Grant Program, COVID-19 Resilience Infrastructure Stream. So we'll just add that as item four at the end. With that, could I have a motion to approve the amended agenda, please? Moved by Mayor Elliott, seconded by Counselor French. Any opposed? Motion carries. Because we are still in the middle of the COVID-19 pandemic, we have to pass Ministerial Order M192, which ensures that although we are meeting electronically today, the district is ensuring openness, transparency, and accessibility and accountability at this meeting by the following means. This meeting is being livestreamed, and a video of this meeting will be available on the district's website for viewing on an on-demand basis. I have a motion to adopt Ministerial Order M192. Moved by Counselor Race, seconded by Counselor French. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. I also need to go through our electronic participation policy, because we are all meeting electronically today. So when council members disconnect or reconnect from the phone line, please be sure to let me know so this can be recorded in a minute. Council members identify themselves when they advise, when they wish to speak by advising the Chair, either by raising their hand if they're on video, or simply saying Chair if they're on audio only. With respect to a vote, council members are not only required to say the nay vote, no statement is required for a vote in favor. Council members, and this goes for staff and guests as well, please keep your telephone or computer on use unless you wish to speak. Council members shall be involved in and participate in meetings. If you have any issues, you can text our corporate officers. If you have any technical difficulties with your phone or your computer, and if the issue is on our side, the meeting will be reset for up to 10 minutes to ensure that we have time to address those technical issues. All right. With that, we can get started on our agenda. The first item we have today is a strategic plan, organizational plan update. I'll be passing it over to our CAO, Ms. Glende, to kick us off with that.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Stoner. Happy to be kicking off another quarterly update in terms of our organizational and strategic plan. Before we do that, though, what I would like to do is introduce to council and our community our Acting General Manager of Community Services, Dan Pageley. So Dan can wave, hopefully he can say hello.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Dan, I think we missed you there, you froze. If you want to do another quick hello.
Oh, good morning, Mayor and Council and staff, and those that are watching. It's a pleasure to be part of the team, and I look forward to this session. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Dan. With that, I'll share my screen, and similar to last time, we'll have a presentation. Each of the lead managers responsible for the different pillars will present their areas. I just want to double check, yes, you can see me? So we'll start with our organizational plan, and as a reminder to the community, this works in concert with the strategic plan, and there are four pillars that we focus on as an organization, and each of these pillars will be presented in terms of our current goals and the update. So we'll start with people, and I'll hand it over to our Director of Human Resources, Anita.
Thank you, Ms. Glende. So the District of Squamish maintains that people are our most valuable and important resource and asset, and so people forms one of the pillars of the organizational plan. In HR, we have our normal day-to-day work, but our strategic goals for 2021 are three key areas: employee engagement, completion of the Human Resources Master Plan, and health, safety, and wellness. Next slide, please. So with regard to employee engagement, we're really trying to get an understanding of the drivers of employee engagement. We conducted a comprehensive survey at the end of 2019, and then before that could be properly actioned, of course, the community was involved in COVID. So we pivoted and engaged in other types of strategies, including a thought exchange, to glean from people where they were right then and there, and what we could do to support them in terms of their engagement and, you know, their positive experience of the workplace through the issues that were arising in that tool. We have been working on actioning those, and we continue to do pulse surveys. We're really trying to keep a handle on where people are at and what we can do to make sure that they are supported in doing the important work of the community. We are working on some new strategies to build engagement, and one of the things that we're going to be launching very shortly is a precursor to a new performance and development review program. It's going to be called a conversation series, and we're going to be inviting people into conversations with their managers about both workplace-related issues as well as engagement issues, including a concept called a "stay interview," to figure out what it is that motivates people to continue to show up and provide their best for the community on an ongoing basis. So we're very excited to kick that off. Next slide, please. We are working on a human resources strategy. So the various major areas of the district have all got master plans to guide their activities, and human resources has been building ours out as well. In 2019 and 2020, we completed a compensation review for exempt staff, and we're still working on a unionized review. We've completed a capacity review and a strategic workforce plan, which is really a data-driven approach to long-range HR forecasting and planning out into the future in sort of three-year, five-year, 10-year, and longer horizons. That'll be somewhat dependent on the TTP program and our ability to develop an HRAS that will support that work, as well as appropriate staff resources, but we're quite excited to be able to build that plan out to support the organization. And then finally, we've got some elements that are still pending completion. We're hoping to complete some of that work this year, COVID-dependent, and that has to do with recruitment, retention, succession, and organizational development. So of course, it's not like nothing's happening in those areas pending a plan. We would just like to really examine best practices and find areas for improvement in all of those headings. Next slide, please. And the third component is one that's actually well-supported by a service-level change that was approved last year, and that is the engagement of an HR coordinator. With the advent of Jenny Small joining our team, we've had a real boost in terms of our ability to enhance our benefits administration. So we plan this year to go out to market for a new benefits provider, to put out RFPs and analyze what's out there in the marketplace, hopefully to drive some savings. We are also going to be working on attendance and disability management in concert with a new return-to-work program that will help people to come back from disability in a manner that's more supportive of their physical, mental, and emotional health, because all the research tells us that the sooner we can bring someone back to work, and the more that they feel engaged and in the fold, the better their recovery tends to be. So we'll be rolling that out in the next two quarters. And then we're also working on something called a core equivalency. There's a standard of excellence in safety in the workplace, and so we're working on meeting all of the indicia to be able to apply for core certification. We may not choose ultimately to get that certification because there's a cost associated, but certainly we want to meet all the markers to be able to do so. And then finally, we are working in concert with our Social and Wellness Committee, and HR, and other elements of the organization, to enhance wellness generally in the organization, including through the development of policies. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Anita. We'll move on now to effective service, which is about having the tools to deliver that effective service and empowering our staff. And I'll pass it over to Kerry, Mr. Ing.
Thanks, Ms. Glende. Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Dan.
Wonderful. I'm Kerry Ing, Technology Transformation Program Manager. As per the December council presentation, the purpose of the TTP is to give the organization the digital tools to deliver outstanding service. In essence, the program is helping the organization to migrate its services from paper to computer, and then eventually to online and mobile platforms. Next slide, please. The in-flight activities that are currently going on is the team is wrapping up payroll-specific year-end tasks, such as issuing T4s with the new payroll system that we had launched in 2020. We are preparing for the second module of our new land management services platform. The first module was launched in December, and it processes and manages all business license activities. In the second module, which will be launching in March, we'll be processing and managing building and development activities. We are gearing up two departments to begin utilization of the new procurement module, and we're targeting February for this launch, and we're preparing to roll out the module to the organization, department by department, starting in the spring. Next slide, please. We are replacing our recreation management system. We have a new software vendor in place. The project team is preparing, has been preparing for this project since November. The project team includes members from the recreation staff, as well as IT and finance. We've kicked off the project with our vendor, that was last week, and we will be launching the new service in the summer of this year. And we've been working with Squamish Fire, and we're preparing to implement a series of recommendations from a report that was given to us from consultants that specialize in public safety. And these improvements will be made to Squamish Fire's digital services so that they're easier to use for the members, in particular with data collection and data reporting. Next slide, please. Oh, can we go to that slide, please? Thanks. In terms of the gaps and risk and mitigation strategies with the TTP for the current activities, we know COVID has highlighted the need to make our services available online. It is challenging, if not difficult or impossible, to meet in person, but we still need to make sure the conversations continue, as exemplified by this meeting. So we need the digital tools to help facilitate those discussions. Staff needs to have time to work on these projects, but it's balancing between the operational demands and project work, and we just need to make sure that staff are available to work on the task. And we need to maintain the legacy systems that are currently in place. These are inflexible and do require workarounds, but they are in place until we can replace them with the new systems. To mitigate against these types of risks and opportunities that are presented is continuing support from senior leaderships and managers and supervisors to make sure their staff have the time to work on the projects. We continually improve with each iteration, so as we go module by module, we do lessons learned and retropractice and apply those lessons for the next deployment. We're leveraging DC restart funds, expedite contactless commerce, starting with Recreation Management, and then we're building contingency plans. Those would be enacted should the legacy systems be degradation to the services, so that there is no impact or minimal impact to the public and to the department in terms of the service levels. And that's the summary for the activities for the TTP.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ing. Next, we move to our CLIME program, and I just want to see if Keely is able to connect. She has indicated she's having some challenges. Are you there, Keely?
I think I'm here.
Fantastic. Over to you.
Great. So as we've seen with the TTP work, the pandemic has changed life across the organization, but it also presents an opportunity for growth and cultural shift, which is what the CLIME program is all about. So we're looking at focusing on a culture of continual improvement and shifting towards that. Right now, we're revisiting the foundations of CLIME in order to more effectively relaunch the program, keeping in mind that there are many COVID-related pressures and opportunities that exist right now. As a metaphor, if we look at climbing a mountain, we are looking through the telescope to find out where we're going to go, what the route is going to be, because our ground has shifted a little bit. In practice, this means revisiting the objectives of the program and learning how to best move forward with it in light of where we stand now after a very challenging pandemic year.
Thank you, Keely. So next, stewardship, so focusing on the long-range resiliency and sustainability of our community assets. And I'll go to, I believe it's Gary Buxton is going to speak to this one.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Glende. So in terms of issues related to infrastructure and our assets, in terms of key progress last year, we're continuing work on watershed-based integrated stormwater master plans. Apologies for the continuous use of acronyms here, and that's continuous work that's going to continue through 2021 and into the future. It's a long-term piece of work. It's more process than product, but that work continues. Some of the work on the Logos East Neighborhood Plan has helped further inform that. And the district's general asset management plan, the review and update of that has started in 2020. The internal committee is working on that, and that'll continue through 2021. That was informed by the gap analysis that was conducted and completed last year, so that's a broader range of assets that'll be captured under the new management plan. On to the next slide, please. In terms of the COVID impact and mitigation, generally, there have been no significant impacts. Work has been slowed a little because of the difference in terms of the way the work needs to get done, generally across the organization, that's been seen, but there's been no significant impact. That work will continue on the asset management plan through 2021. In terms of new opportunities, COVID has certainly given us a number of new grant applications that we have taken advantage of already. I say we continue later on this morning, there's another grant application related to COVID programs that we're continuing to follow, and all of those are programs that we were already engaged in. We're not chasing grants for the sake of chasing grants. We're chasing grants that support the programs that we already have in place. I think we're on to the next slide.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
I'll pass it now to Heather Buxton.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Two key stewardship goals for the Finance Department and the organization in 2019 and 2020 were to implement the financial architecture in UBW and to establish a quarterly financial and major project reporting process. Several elements were required in order to meet these goals. The financial architecture was established, and all financial data was brought over into the financial system, which is called Unit 4 or UBW. The district now has push-button internal and external financial statements, which was a large achievement for the team. Of particular pride for the team is the external financial statements, including the audit lead sheets and notes to the financial statements, which is not commonly achieved by most organizations. Management variance reports were created, and then organizational-wide training workshops were rolled out. From that information provided by management, the quarterly financial report was created with operational results to budget and prior year, and quarterly status updates on special operating and capital projects. The first edition of the quarterly report was issued for the second quarter results of 2020. And then finally, looking forward in 2021, tender awards, including successful candidates, tender amounts, and evaluation matrix results will be included in the quarterly report. And with that, I believe I will pass the presentation back over to Gary Buxton.
Actually, no, this is OCP Monitoring Program and Reporting, and I believe we have Dan Griffin on the line, our GIS supervisor.
Apologies.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. So our community performance dashboard was launched in June 2019 in conjunction with our annual report. It was created to monitor and track progress towards our Squamish 2040 OCP goals of resiliency, livability, health, connectedness, and engagement. There's 30-plus indicators, and they're tracked in a simple and accessible way for the community, with a simple on-track or off-track to highlight whether we're meeting our goals. In addition, there are 16 economic development indicators under the pillars People, Business, and Place, and these track economic development data, as well as supporting local business decision-making. Next slide, please. We're continuing to build out the dashboard. We're adding the Community Climate, sorry. We're continuing to build out the dashboard, adding our Community Climate Action Plan indicators. These will include things like GHD building emissions, community retrofit data, electrical vehicle adoption in Squamish, and that includes a layer from our GIS open data site, which is electric vehicle charging stations. And that leads me to my next slide, please, which is talk about our open data program. So there is some integration between open data and our community performance dashboard, and we're building on that. And we're also hoping to grow our open data program to support open government and data decision-making at the district. One of the key deliverables of this program is the development of an open data policy. So we formed an internal working group that includes GIS IT, planning, economic development, to develop a policy and framework for open data at the district. We're trying to find the right fit for our organization. There's lots of examples of larger communities that are engaged in open data and have open data policies. So we're trying to find the right fit that works for us. We partnered with Concordia University and their Center for Engineering Society to help us develop this policy and framework. Really, it's around open government, which the Government Academy defines as a governing culture that holds that the public has the right to access documents and proceedings of government to allow for greater openness, accountability, and engagement. And open data is defined as structured data that is machine-readable and freely shared in use and built on without restriction. So why do we want open data at the district? It provides a framework for managing strategic data across the organization, and we're really focused on those strategic data sets and practical implications of open data. For instance, our open data platform, last year, we received over 2,500 users with an average of 16% return rate on usage with over 15,000 page views. So you can imagine, that's likely hundreds of data requests that are self-served, that we don't have to, you know, as staff, respond to. Next slide, please. So what we have upcoming, we're presenting to council, we're looking for endorsement around open data principles. We'll craft an open data policy, and this is an internal working policy that will be developed, and that will lead to a framework and roadmap for implementing open data. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Our last pillar in terms of our organizational plan is building bridges, and this refers to our relationship specifically with our Squamish Nation community members and our other community partners. So I will pass it back to our research and project coordinator, Keely, to speak about our work with that.
Thank you, Linda. So as Linda mentioned, one of our goals is to develop, building bridges with Squamish Nation, and one of the specific goals is to develop shared understandings of truth and reconciliation and to collaborate with Squamish Nation. To this end, we will be continuing to provide cultural training for staff. This is through the Building Bridges Program and other decolonization workshops that are provided by First Nations facilitators. We're very thankful for this. And in conjunction with this, we are currently developing the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Access Committee, otherwise known as IDEA. And this is a new internal committee that will be comprised of staff from across the organization and various departments, and will be focusing on understanding how our current processes at the district can better reflect our organizational values. There will also be a focus on actioning the UN Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, or UNDRIP, as well as the calls to action from the Truth and Reconciliation Committee.
This slide here speaks to our collaborative projects that we are working on currently with the Squamish Nation, and it goes across the spectrum of infrastructure projects in terms of our decking, emergency management, and as well, our Human Resources Department is working on recruiting and reaching out to the Squamish Nation for employment opportunities. So that's it for the organizational plan. At this point, I'll go back to the chair. Would you like us to continue with the strategic plan and have questions following the entire presentation?
Yeah, I think that's probably a better way to go.
Great, thanks. So we'll now move into our strategic plan, and as council and the community are aware, there are four priority areas, and we'll start with the planet and our environment, and I believe that Ian Pickett will be speaking to this.
Thank you, Linda. So we'll start with key progress on this pillar. So one thing we are excited to relate is that we will be unveiling a new website within the next couple of weeks that highlights local climate action. As you can see from the images that we've included, we're trying to make this as colorful and engaging as possible. We also have just received cycling maps. They're hot off the press. It's really exciting also to see that the connectivity in the cycling routes is really starting to come together. It's getting easier and easier to get more readily throughout the community using the infrastructure we've developed. The Sustainability Group has helped to fund and is also participating in the ongoing procurement improvements, and we have applied for funding for the heat pump concierge service and also a broader EV infrastructure initiative throughout the Lower Mainland, or the Sea of Sky more specifically. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Thanks. Kreen Ladue, our Senior Energy Specialist, is often running. There is a ton of opportunities and a ton of challenges to undertake in this position. One thing that we're really happy with is that Kreen is partnering very broadly throughout the organization, not just with the engineering group. One major opportunity is with all of the capital projects that are coming up. It's a real stitch in time and a real opportunity to reduce our emissions through those projects. Our recent waste audit showed improvements in both diversion and per capita waste. As you will recall from recent meetings, we have initiated a tote exchange campaign and--
Ian, for some reason, we can't hear you anymore. No, is anybody else having a hard time hearing him, or is it just us? No, nobody can hear you all of a sudden. Do you want to try muting and unmuting yourself, Ian? Ian, are you able to hear us? Thumbs up to Sam.
He seems to be stalling his video.
Ian, if you--
Yeah, you're back.
Okay, I'm sorry, the phone call got dropped. I apologize.
That's all right. You were just finishing up when we lost you, your statements on the waste audit with modest improvement.
Okay, that's where I really dropped the zinger, so I'm glad you didn't hear it. Our recent waste audit showed improvements in both diversion and per capita waste reduction. We have initiated a tote exchange campaign and also are actively researching a deconstruction bylaw. The landfill gas project is nearly complete. All the piping is in place, and the flare needs to be manufactured, so hoping that gas can be extracted as early as in April. Next slide, please. So at risk, I think it is fair to state at this point that we are certainly not going to hit our per capita waste target of 300 kilograms per person in 2021, although it is noteworthy that we are starting to make progress toward this. It will take a few years. It is an ambitious target, and there were some COVID delays, but we are working hard towards significant education, engagement, and enforcement activities. But we are working hard towards significant education, engagement and enforcement activities. The local carbon marketplace, as you will probably recall, we decided to push this to be a 2021 priority, given that the C cap took a lot of time and effort in 2020. And for single occupancy vehicle use, there have been some challenges and delays, particularly with respect to regional transit. Our local transit initiatives are back and running after COVID delays in 2020. Next slide, please. I'll start talking as it, as it switches over. So looking ahead, as I, as I noted earlier in the presentation, there are several ongoing initiatives toward reducing waste. Our municipal energy and emissions plan, or MEET, is underway. It is going to focus on five strategic pathways. These include the Brennan Center, as it is such a large proportion of our building emissions, looking at local offset opportunities, fleet electrification, and also doing more research into embodied carbon. With regard to reducing single occupancy vehicle use, we continued active transit, actually active transport improvements. These include the Mamquam Road west of Highway ninety-nine and lighting the remainder of the corridor trail. Transit future action planning is underway. There are over three hundred survey responses to date. And also transit maintenance facility planning, which will enable us to have more buses and also more electrification opportunities. Thank you very much, and back to you, Linda.
Thank you. Our next strategic priority area is housing affordability and diversity, and I'll pass it back to Gary Buckstein.
Ms. Blende, so key progress on our housing front last year. And, and to date, with our partners, Sea to Sky Community Services, the Buckley affordable housing project is now in the ground. That is actively under construction. Working with Helping Hands, we've managed to work through the Bridge to Housing project that now is, is closed and gone. And where the Under One Roof project is now fully functional and open, which forms the, the best part of the emergency part of our housing spectrum. And on the, on the policy front, we continue to make progress even of last week on the housing organization and the corporation model. That work is very active and is making good progress. And partnering agreement with Sea to Sky Community Services is, is underway as well, and will be with council shortly. On to the next slide, please. In terms of our current status and potential risks and opportunities to get to that hundred and twenty-five new affordable housing units, if we account for the seventy-six in the Buckley, we have forty-nine more. But I say the Buckley apartment building is, is underway. That is, that is positive. We're exploring opportunities for a second potential project in the supportive housing part of the spectrum. And we'll see where that goes in the coming months. Terms of the housing organization, that will be completed in 2021. The draft terms of reference are with the nonprofits, and we're in active discussions with them even of Wednesday of last week. The partner agreement is completed and under legal review. The one potential at-risk part of the housing program would be the ownership element. That's delayed pending organizational formation. That's probably unlikely to be able to meet the, the 2022 deadline. So that's a summary of where we've been able to make progress in the last few months and where we're heading in the next few months.
Thank you, Mr. Buckstein. The next strategic priority area is the economy and local jobs, and I'll pass it over to our Economic Development Officer, Kate Mulligan.
Thank you, Linda, and good morning, Chair and Council. If you just want to advance to the next slide. So the economic, oh, back a little bit. So the Economic Development Department has been working collaboratively with its two governance groups, the Economic Leadership Team and Partner Forum, along with business stakeholders to implement deliverables related to the district's emerging sector roadmap and action plan. And so in order to action priority area one of the plan, which is focused on foundational cluster development strategies, the district developed an emerging sector series, which was an engagement-based project to confirm ambition and vision for the business ecosystem and to uncover barriers and opportunities for general business ecosystem and cluster development. And the series included fifteen sessions with key stakeholder organizations, the governance group members, industry and local citizens, and more than a hundred individuals participated and helped identify forward actions. The department has also been working to complete research that informs employment space needs and the viability of employment land space as it relates to various sectors of our local economy. To date, forty-nine in-depth interviews have been carried out by our economic development staff, which look at space allocation and the characteristics of space and includes interviews with local companies as well as non-Squamish-based industry across a spectrum of business stages. Additionally, the department is completing pro formas with the help of a consultant to inform the financial viability of space for sectors of our local economy. The department's also engaged in facilitating partnerships with organizations to further training and education needs of our emerging sectors. For instance, economic development recently worked with UBC Feeding Growth to provide trading to food and beverage entrepreneurs considering new ventures. The department continues to engage with its two governance groups and was recently, as part of the emerging sector series, and completed a new photo shoot to refresh and round out our visual assets focused on our emerging sectors and general sectors of the economy. Also, we've made an application, and we are waiting to hear in order to revitalize the Squamish Adventure Center as a tourism-oriented asset. If you want to move to the next slide. So COVID has presented an unprecedented challenge for the local, for local business. Economic development has been working to respond to business needs during the pandemic as well as support the recovery and future resiliency of our economy. The pandemic has resulted in additional resource requirements for economic development in order to coordinate with partners, share pertinent information with our local business community, and support local business with recovery programs such as the Business Resiliency Program and the Municipal Asset Program. While many businesses have faced constraints, this has also been a time where businesses have initiated, have been innovative and have pivoted their operations. The Squamish Chamber and Tourism Squamish have been highlighting these stories throughout the pandemic. While the department is very much focused on the long-term resiliency of our economy, goals to increase local employment and the number of priority firms may be impacted by the pandemic. The last slide, please. So looking ahead, economic development will be focused on implementing actions uncovered part of the emerging, uncovered as part of the emerging sector series, which spill over to the implementation of priority area two of our emerging sector roadmap and action plan. So this is going to involve content creation, marketing and promotion, lead generation, sector-based training and education, facilitating new partnerships, as well as supporting effective policy development. Thanks. I can just turn it back to Linda.
Thank you, Kate. And the last strategic priority area is neighborhood connectivity and public spaces. And I believe that kicking this off will be Mr. Valenis.
Thank you, Linda. Good morning, Chair and members of the committee. So we had five goals under this pillar. And the goals were listed in the previous, in the previous slide. I'll just quickly go over them. So the first one was completion of two neighborhood plans progressing to shovel-ready or beyond stage projects on three key district projects. Increasing park space in five neighborhoods as well as waterfront areas and utilization of increasing utilization of public space. Next slide, please. Some of the key progress we've achieved over the last couple of years. So the University Heights Park is now complete. Also, the three strategies are completed, so that's real estate and facilities master plan, arts, culture and heritage strategy, as well as the youth strategy. The, the Valley Fire Hall is currently underway, as well as the Loggers East Neighborhood Plan. Next slide, please. In terms of neighborhood planning, so the Loggers East Neighborhood Plan is now in the bylaw reading process. We have done all the background information gathering. Public engagement has been done up to the public hearing. The plan has been drafted, and we're heading to public hearing on February ninth. It will be important to keep this project on track so that we can hopefully finish it by Q2, which will be dependent on the outcome of the public hearing as well as getting additional readings to finish that project. The Garibaldi Estates Neighborhood Plan is scheduled for this year. We have some budgets proposed in the budget to do background studies, and then the plan will be driven by staff. But we will not be starting that project until the Loggers East Neighborhood Plan is completed. Once we do have budget, we can start gathering some of the background information that's needed for the Garibaldi Estates plan. Next slide, please. Over to Cal.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Just a quick update on the three projects that we have that were slated to be shovel-ready for 2022. We're on plan. The Valley Cliff Fire Hall development, the building permits being issued, it's under construction at the moment. We're on time on budget. The temporary fire hall on Clark Road is complete. The fire department's moved in. We're completed on time on budget. Valley Cliff, moving forward, we are anticipating a completion of mid next year, May. Things go to plan, and I don't see why they won't. But the main risk moving forward would be just standard time cost escalation issues on the construction. We've mitigated that by adding third-party checks in. We've got a third-party quantity today. We have extremely detailed plans to try and minimize any unknowns. And the focus moving forward is to minimize change orders, at least from the client side, the district side. On the public works site redevelopment, just an update, we're looking at doing maintenance base and new office there. The project has started. We're slated to push shovel on the ground at the end of this year, quarter four. We're currently going through architect tendering at the moment. The anticipated hurdles moving forward, we've got some pretty strong GHG emission reduction plans for this project. We're trying to bridge that gap between what we've got in budget to try and achieve those, those plans. The way that we're doing that is by having very early consultants and engagement by all and making sure everyone knows what our goals are, the numbers and the baselines that we're aiming to achieve. On the Tantalus Fire Hall, we started the project as well. Next year is slated on the real estate facilities master plan to start that project, which is immediately after the Valley Cliff Fire Hall. At the moment, we're starting the design phase. We haven't quite started yet. And the risks moving forward would be, again, probably budgetary. And that would be making sure that we get the product that we want compared to the budget that we slated for this project. The way that we're going to mitigate that is making sure of a very detailed scope of work, very detailed specification. We work very closely with the end user, which is the fire department. And we're also going to leverage our experience working on Valley Cliff Fire Hall to make sure that we get a really, really good product in this one. All in all, we're heading down the path of everything being on schedule at the moment.
Thank you, Cal.
All right, back to me. So the five parks that are currently underway is the Deadpool Park, the Oceanfront Park, Waterfront Park, Garibaldi Springs, and the University Heights Park, which is now complete. The, so the Deadpool Park, we're preparing the tender documents and preparing for tree clearing. That project is tied hip to hip with the affordable housing project on Buckley Avenue. So some of the servicing works are interrelated, and there is a good chance that finishing of the park will depend when the servicing goes in for the Buckley project. So there may be some delays in landscaping around the perimeter of the park related to the Buckley project. Oceanfront Park is, staff are still finalizing some of the details in grades with the, with the proponents now that we know a little more in terms of what's happening next to the park. And the applicant has DFO approvals and is actively filing fill on site. The Waterfront Park, similarly, the applicant has now DFO approvals and the provincial approval. We're still working out the details of habitat compensation. Garibaldi Springs, the, that application is close to getting DFO approvals. And so staff are actively working on the development permit area one application review as well as the third-party covenant, which will have to go on there, on, on our part to make sure that there's third-party oversight in the future for any infrastructure works. So all for the Deadpool Park, the Oceanfront Park, Waterfront and Garibaldi Springs are slated to begin this year. So this will be a big year for our construction. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonas. And to round out this priority area, I'll pass it back over to, or not back over, but over to Devon Gassar, Acting Director of Recreation.
And Council, looking at baseline utilization, the status currently, we're working with IT to lay out the data as part of the open source data program, which my colleagues in IT spoke to earlier. There is a real opportunity that staff have identified with the new rec software coming online, tentatively scheduled for July, which one is very excited about, with target completion anticipated at the end of 2021. Undertake public space and user experience. Surveys, surveys scheduled rollout was delayed due to COVID. Internally, we're looking to operate in 2021. Arts, Arts Culture and Heritage Strategy, as council knows, was adopted with early completion of year one actions and tactics being incorporated into staff work plans. Recreation Strategic Planning and Optimization Plan. The Brennan Park Fields and Land Master Plan are on deck to present the findings to council in February. Master, the master plan will be sent to stakeholders in early January with, with follow-up engagement with council in, in February. The, the seniors hub drafted, the seniors hub license has been drafted and reviewed by partners. And that too will be coming to council for a robust presentation in, in February. And, and finally, the youth hub. Foundry onboarding meetings continue with operating agreements being developed. Currently, the acting GM of Community Services is, is sitting with it to determine the risk during the COVID landscape. Expect further staff updates in the coming months.
And Council, to round out our presentation today, additional work that staff are taking on in addition to the strategic plan and organizational plan as it relates to COVID through the BC Restart Grant is the idea of covered structures for district parks. And Cal Bragg is on the call here to talk about this very briefly, and then we can turn it back over to Council.
Thank you, Linda. Yeah, just quickly, an overview. So we're in this design phase at the moment. We're working through the site product with BIA, our Squamish and internal district planners. The focus is to make them environmentally friendly, you know, really able to be relocatable in the future and also be located in areas that allow maximum use rather than just generically place them in, say, the center of a park. So the details we're working through at the moment include the scope, specification, location and detailed budgets. We will be ready to start the actual tendering process for construction over the coming weeks here. So it's just a quick overview.
Thank you very much, Cal. With that, Council, thank you very much for entertaining our presentation. This is the strategic robust work of the organization, and we are happy to be able to provide you.
Thank you so much. It was so lovely to see so many of our staff on the call. So Council, there is the opportunity to ask clarifying questions of where these projects are at. Also, we are in the midst of budget, and we know that COVID has impacted some of these strategic areas. So I'd also like to get some feedback from you in terms of, especially projects that are at risk that, that you see of concern from your perspective.
and get a bit of insight of where those might be okay, that we are revising the timeline on some of those projects, given the scenario that we're in, or those that we're really not willing to let go of that timeline. We want to find new ways to push on those that they can, that can inform our budget going forward. I saw Counselor Race's hand, so we'll start with you.
Thank you. And it's directed to Mr. Belanischkas, and I'm wondering with these sub-area plans, completion of Loggers East, and then when that finishes, starting Garibaldi Estates, but I believe there's also some private initiatives. And I was thinking specifically after our zoning bylaw discussions a couple of months ago now around Trumpet Woods, are those sub-area initiatives able to go ahead at the same time as either Loggers East or Garibaldi Estates, or are they in sequence?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Through you, Chair. They would be, if we do get an application from a landowner to start sub-area planning, that would go in parallel with our work on existing neighborhoods. So there's a bit of a distinction between existing neighborhoods, which is our priority, and then private lands, you know, big pieces of land where the landowner is intending to apply. And we know that the landowner in Valley Cliff is intending to apply this year. So it is quite likely that we'll be working on two of those plans in parallel.
Thank you. And Chair, I have one more question for a different department. It's directed to the TTP, Mr. Ing, and I'm wondering if we could just get some sense of what the timeline is for this project now, when it might be finished.
Through the chair, thank you for the question. We're looking to wrap up the program at the end of 2022. And the goals for it is to ensure the new financial system is in place, the new land management system in place, as well as making these services online and available via mobile devices. Critical to this is the replacement of the existing latency system that I mentioned earlier. The system is called MACE. MACE currently runs our services such as property taxes, utilities, ticketing, and dog licenses, for example. We need to get, to be honest, we need to get rid of MACE. And so the program I would suggest is a success. Once the new systems are in place, they replace the services provided by MACE, and MACE is no longer part of the organization's productivity suite.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Mayor Elliott?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions for a few different people. One, I guess from a finance perspective, do we now have through the TTP project, modules in place that we can do some more modeling, so scenario analysis, and look into the future around our cash flow, our capital plan?
Thank you through the chair. Or me. Thank you through the chair. Yeah, we do. We're, in 2021, we are looking to do a longer-term financial plan, which will encompass modeling, trend analysis, and that sort of thing. So we do have the data in our financial architecture now.
Thank you. I guess to Mr. Buckston, on the housing authority and the work that's going on, it's been sort of quiet for a while now, and I'm wondering if there's an opportunity to give a quick update to Council and the community, or whether it is actually going to be coming to Council in the near term?
Thank you through the chair. In terms of an update, we've been talking with the nonprofit operators that actually own and operate the housing that we have in the, in the community at present about what we can form jointly. And those discussions were delayed probably two, three, four months in the middle of last year, when we intended to get going with the course of the pandemic and it upsetting the ability just to get together. We've, we've figured that out. We've had probably four or five meetings now, and we actually have a draft terms of reference for the organization that we've developed. I can certainly share that with Council. It's not ready for public consumption yet, but in the last two or three months, we've made significant progress in terms of what the organization could and could be. So I suspect within two or three months, it could be in front of Council.
Okay. And then also you on the affordable housing unit. We talked about the things that we've been working in partnership with Buckley Avenue, DC Housing, but we've also secured affordable units through rezoning, and I wonder if any of those units will be built, like are under construction and will be built within this term?
It's, given the lead time, sorry, through the chair, given the lead time for many of those projects to get through construction, it's getting increasingly unlikely. It's likely that some of them will be under construction within the next year. But I, the time is getting such that by, by the end of 2022, that any of these will actually be at occupancy level. But I suspect some of them will be under construction. Waterfront landing comes to mind, and a couple of others, much smaller projects.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful for the next quarterly update to provide this as part of this portion of the update and just say, like, when it was rezoned and whether it's at BP, BTU, or under construction, and just to give Council a sense, and the community a sense of, like, how long it takes. So why we continue to keep working through our partners and through DC Housing to build housing, because if we just leave it up to the development community, here's, here's the timeline. And I think it's important to start acknowledging that, but also for the community to see that we are trying to capture units in the rezoning. So that would be my suggestion for last time. And I just have one more for economic development. And so I guess my question for Ms. Mulligan is, we talk about increasing the number of target sector firms and target sector or local jobs, but have we actually established a baseline for those measurements?
Hi, through you, the chair. Yes, we have. They are part of our makeup, part of our indicators dashboard, and we will be actually revisiting the indicators dashboard to update it in the coming months when data is readily available.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson, and then Counselor Peddingill.
Thank you. First of all, I have a question for Anita Blake regarding the human resources strategy. I noticed in the overview, what I was, I was looking for something that you may be able to elaborate on, and that is the topic of knowledge transfer, addressing knowledge transfer between employees who may be moving in a position or leaving or retiring to new staff. Is that going to be addressed as a distinct topic or a challenge, if you like, in the human resources strategy?
Through the chair, it looks as though Anita and Miss Blake has dropped off the call, so I'll get in touch with her, and we can get that answered shortly for you. We'll hold your questions, Counselor Anderson. If you have another, please go ahead.
Very good. A question for Mr. Bragg regarding the Covered Spaces project. I wondered whether we might be, or whether you are, the staff is reaching out to the Hauson Performing Arts regarding these structures. Now, this is not, I asked this not only to suggest that there may be some use aspects that they may be interested in or can advise on, but they also have significant expertise in the design of spaces, infrastructure for spaces, and temporary spaces. So I'm just asking whether the outreach or liaison has been extended from this, with this project to the Hauson Performing Arts in particular. Thank you.
Through the chair, thank you, Counselor Anderson. In short, no, I haven't reached out there, but we will put that on the, the scope now to, to follow that path. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If I may, Chair, this isn't really a question, although perhaps staff may be able to offer a comment or an update, but I'm noting in the strategic, strategic plan tracker, in the economy and jobs section, there isn't reference to marine strategy. And of the four focus areas of the marine strategy adopted in 2016, two are really almost entirely focused on economic development or aspects of it. So I'll just suggest that I do believe that the marine aspects or the marine action strategy implementation should be referenced in the strategic plan tracker, but you may perhaps have an, have an update or will for us eventually. But I just wanted to note the absence of reference to marine strategy in the strategic plans tracker. Thank you.
Through the chair, thank you. The marine action strategy is referenced in the strategic plan document as an ongoing priority, and certainly is a high priority for staff, but not necessarily under the economic development pillar in the current tracker. But staff do have marine action strategy as top of mind, and will be bringing updates to Council. I don't know if Ms. Mulligan has more to add to that, but that is why the tracker doesn't indicate it at this time.
That was, that was exactly what I was going to say. And right now, it's focused very much with, I think, the planning department.
Thank you. And Counselor Anderson, we have Ms. Blake back on the line, so if you'd like to repeat your first question, please go ahead.
Oh, thank you very much. My question, Ms. Blake, was how knowledge transfer between employees who may be moving within departments or positions, or who may be retiring? How can we address, how might this be addressed in a human resources strategy, transferring that knowledge from experience to newer employees or new people in a position?
Sure. That's an ongoing process that we engage in all the time now. And in fact, we're actively working on cross-training in key areas because one of our, our fundamental principles is that we should not have a single point of failure. There are some positions that are so specialized that it would be very difficult to find someone to whom to transfer the knowledge, but in that case, we would expect to recruit a specialist, and we would have an overlapping period where the departing employee could hopefully transfer their, their district-specific knowledge to the new person. But it really is an underpinning of everything that we do in all the areas. So for example, you know, Bob Smith in Public Works has an active program of mentoring and development, and we see that in the way that our internal employees are able to bid on and successfully achieve promotion because they have learned, grown, and developed. I mean, and I see that across the departments. The approach is a little bit specific to the individual manager and the position, but yeah, it will form part of any HR strategy going forward. It's going to be part of our succession planning.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Peddingill.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So my first question, I presume, is for Mr. Pickett, but I'll try it and see. We've been going through the neighborhood, the Loggers East Neighborhood Plan, and it seems that we don't have a specific number or idea of how much carbon we can add with that plan. And so I'm wondering, in, in some of the upcoming work, do we plan to address that sort of understanding, or what do we need to have that? And what I'm thinking is, you know, density on a per capita basis tends to help lowering emissions per capita, but on a, on an absolute basis, a lot more people means a lot more emissions. So how do we know when we're planning a new neighborhood and thinking about density and thinking about these things, that we are staying within our carbon targets, and we're going to be able to hit that 45% reduction?
That's an excellent question, Counselor Peddingill. I won't pretend to fully answer it because it's, it's a big one. Yeah, our, you know, there certainly is a shortfall of our ability currently to estimate the, the full carbon implications of a, of a development. We're certainly working toward better understanding the carbon implications of buildings and the relative carbon kind of density per person. I'll go to the limb a little bit. Personally, I feel that it's, you know, looking per capita is, is quite important. You know, regardless of the, the total project, I, you know, I, I feel a little uncomfortable of, you know, it, it is, it's an interesting incentive to try to limit growth, to limit our, our emissions. So I think we need to balance that. So, you know, I don't think a kind of a strategy toward limiting population growth toward the goal of reducing our emissions is, is the most appropriate one. It certainly does make our targets more difficult. That being said, our ultimate target is to be carbon neutral, which, you know, in a sense, it doesn't matter what your, what your baseline is. Yeah, again, I totally acknowledge that I haven't really answered your question, but I, I do appreciate it and the scope of it. Thank you.
So if I can follow up, and I guess what I'm sort of wondering is, you know, presumably, and even if it's somewhat inaccurate, we have an idea of, okay, we're doing a new neighborhood. We can't afford to add more than 500 tons of annual carbon with this neighborhood, and that's our starting place. And at least that somewhat frames our thinking. And so what do we need to do to get to a point where we have at least that sort of understanding?
Counselor Peddingill, I'm going to jump in here. We have five minutes left on the agenda, and this is a really big topic, and we're trying to keep this as a high-level approach on where we're getting to on our strategic plan. So appreciate that there may be a gap here that you're seeing, but I suggest that we try and move this conversation somewhere else at this point.
Through the, through the mayor, would, would you mind if I quickly, quickly respond to that? I think there's a note, or if you want to move on, that's fine.
If you have a quick response, please go ahead.
Sure. One thing, just to let you know, we, this is a conversation that we are having toward creating a, toward creating tools that help us quantify the emissions implications. It's a really tricky balance to, to come up with a tool that's easy to use and ubiquitous versus one that's just so vague. We don't have confidence in the numbers. So it's, we are working actively toward this, talking with GHG accountants. We're, we're still not sure if we're going to be able to hit that sweet spot between usability and results that we're, we're happy with, but it is something we are looking into. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That was sort of my bigger point is I, it does seem like, and I want to understand if I was correct, that we do have a gap in our sort of, our, some of the tasks we're taking on, and I think that is a pretty important gap to fill as I look through the other climate-related tasks. The, I guess, we are coming back to the quarterly reports later.
So the quarterly report is something that we've already discussed. It came to Council back in December. We've included in the agenda simply as information for Council, so it was easily accessed. But that's something we've already had a discussion on. It was more so just to inform the fuller picture of the strategic plan update.
Okay, so then I will leave just with one last thing, if I may. I maybe, I guess, is there a point at which we will talk about how we are waiting some of the feedback in our neighborhood plans? And I'm just bringing that up as I was looking at the neighborhood plans on our agenda and what we're tackling. And I'm not sure who that's a question for.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Through the chair, the CIO and I have been talking about a process to take lessons learned from our first neighborhood plan and move them into the Garibaldi Estates plan. So we're just working behind the scenes with staff about how that might come forward to Council so that we, we keep that sort of idea of continuous improvement into the next neighborhood plan.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that because I do, I would appreciate some conversation on how we are waiting some of the sorts of feedback we are getting to our plans.
Thank you. I have Counselor French.
Thanks, Chair. I have a question about the demolition of the fire hall recently, and the question comes through the lens of leading by example. I had feared that that whole building would just end up in a landfill when we first decided to demolish it. I saw a report recently that indicated somewhere around, I think my memory says 65% of that demolished fire hall was recycled. And I would just love to hear briefly a little bit about how those materials how those materials were recycled, that which was recovered.
Yeah, through the chair, you're correct. It was actually a little bit more than that. So we set out for this job here to recycle at least 75% of the materials. We're still getting final calculations, but I think we're going to end up over 80% at the end of today. The way that was recycled is this particular building had a lot of steel in it, which is actually a really good product to recycle. So that went off to the recyclers, and we just worked through and all the consultants picked out the best ways we're going to do this. So we had split bins on the site, so all the wood went back and it didn't actually go into landfill. The steel didn't go into landfill. There's minimal drywall in there, and that went to a drywall recycler. Everything was picked apart and went through as best we could to obtain a plus 80% non-filling that went to landfill.
Okay, and a quick follow-up. I'm anticipating the demolition of the Tantless Fire Hall will be far more challenging from a recycling perspective. Were there any lessons learned out of this project that we could apply to Tantless to help with recycling efforts on that building?
Through the chair, yes. This one's a different building, where there's a lot more concrete involved in there, but we will be, I mean, this building will come down relatively straightforwardly once all the earthquake protection is being removed, and concrete's a pretty recyclable product as well. So I'm knit to jump in to get details of that, but we're going to aim to get even further than 80% reduced landfill from that particular building.
Thanks, Chair.
I'll put myself on the list, and then we'll try and wrap up here. I had a question, I think, for Ms. Kinnear about the idea committee, and there was a mention that this has a focus on undrip and a truth and reconciliation recommendation, which we know that First Nations reconciliation is a big part of inclusion, diversity, and equity, but it's only one part. And if I remember back to the council resolution, it was broader in nature. And so I'm just curious where the rest of that conversation fits in and ensuring that there is enough budget in the 2021 budget so that we can address some of the things like external representation on council and staff committees and things like that.
Thank you. Through the chair, yes, you're right. The idea committee is much broader than just undrip and reconciliation, although this is a major part of it. And so for the 2021 first year, we imagine that the cohort, the first cohort of the committee will be looking closely at what the work plan will entail. First of all, how do we want to form this committee and what kind of actions do we want to look at? So really focus on creating a longer-term work plan. We also recognize that undrip and TRC actions are very important and have been, you know, in the works for a while. So we plan to continue with a small focus on that as a priority and learning as we go to develop the work plan for the wider committee. So in summary, definitely recognize that this is more than just truth and reconciliation and undrip, but that these are really crucial aspects of what we'll be doing.
Thank you. And then I have a question for Mr. Buxton on the extension of the Affordable Housing Program to include affordable home ownership, and appreciate that there's, we need to get some of our ducks in a row with regards to the organization before we can really start to consider how we might operate an affordable home ownership program. But I'm curious if there's something that we can do or start doing with regards to thinking how we might acquire these units? And I know that we have a review of the CAC policy coming up, and is that something that we would contemplate in the CAC review policy? Or how, have we put any thought into how we might actually capture those units for affordable housing ownership?
Have we done any work on that? Sorry, through the chair, have we done any work on that to date? No, that's really a financing issue of how to fund acquisition and then subsequent disposition of those units. The program of, I mean, lots of other communities, Whistler Ken or lots of communities in the U.S. have ownership programs, the details of which we can replicate and duplicate fairly readily. The issue of acquisition is a funding issue and whether or not you can finance that transaction.
Thank you. Counsel, any other burning questions or comments? Yeah, Mayor Elliott?
Just to Mr. Bragg, I know we are looking at those kind of beautiful timber structures that are movable, but are we also considering sales over playgrounds and that sort of thing in terms of coverage space?
Through the chair, yes, we have looked at that. I think it's going to come down to a cost at the end of the day, and the focus has been wood mainly because it's a carbon-captured material as opposed to sales. But I can definitely push that back into the thought process here. It was looked at before, and we moved off that to get more of a wood look for environmental and then look purposes, but I can definitely bring that back up with the participants again.
Yeah, it's, not only does it provide some solar protection, but it allows parents and children to be outside in inclement weather as well. So it's full season, and it addresses a demographic of our community that might not otherwise use a timber structure. So it'd be useful for consideration.
Through the chair, thank you. Appreciate it.
Not seeing any more hands at this point. Thank you to all of staff for the thorough presentation and council for your questions. My understanding is that staff will now take this away, and we'll get another quarterly update in four months' time. And if there's anything that is flagged in here, we still have a few budget conversations coming up. So this is your last, not your last chance, but one of your last chances to think about how you might want to incorporate some of these things in the budget if there's anything that jumps out at you. With that, thank you very much to staff, and we will move on to our next item, which is also going to be presented by Ms. Glenn Day on the Federation of Canadian Municipalities' Jordan Municipal Support Project partnership.
Thank you, Counselor Stoner. If I can just get some patience while I share my screen for the second presentation. Thank you. I, today, am presenting on the Jordan Municipal Support Project that Swamish has been informally involved in. And the objective of today is to provide council and the community an update on the work that we have continued to provide to this project, as well as seek council endorsement to become a formal Canadian municipal partner. This is a reminder, FCM, Federation of Canadian Municipalities, is the overarching body that represents all the municipalities in Canada. And they have many different programs to support municipal work in Canada, and then they also have an international program to support global partnerships and bringing Canadian expertise to countries around the world for mutual learning and support. The Jordan Municipal Support Project, this project aims to strengthen the resilience of Jordanian municipalities in central and southern Jordan. And I'll read a brief description from the FCM project page, which says that through the Jordan Municipal Support Project, local governments in central and southern Jordan work with Canadian municipal experts to strengthen municipal services, improve solid waste management, and ensure all citizens, in particular women and youth, engage in shaping their community and their country's future. This five-year, $20.6 million initiative is funded by Global Affairs Canada and implemented in collaboration with Jordan's Ministry of Municipal Affairs. So the three key goals by which they're going to strengthen, the project will strengthen Jordanian municipality's capacity are on this slide. Where Swamish has currently and hoping to continue to contribute in the future are really numbers one and three, so strengthening leadership and administrative capacity as well as public engagement and knowledge sharing. There is a large component of this that's a solid waste management services project that Swamish is not involved in at this time. Just a map of Jordan showing the different areas, and it's too small to really see, but if council wanted to look into more of the legend of where the 12 municipalities are This is a cover page of an internal report that I've given or provided for you to have a look at. If you'll notice at the top middle is Megan Latimer, our emergency management coordinator. Megan's actually joining us today with this presentation. She has been providing some fabulous work to this project. And some other pictures there, and then on the bottom, you'll see the entities that are engaged in this project, so other municipalities, capital regional districts, and then the LGMA here in B.C. The beneficiaries of this project, direct would be those in Jordan, the actual elected officials and staff, community groups, women and youth. And then indirect would be the community members in Jordan, private sector partners that the Jordanian municipalities are working with, as well as community-based organizations, and then, of course, the staff that are involved with the project because of the learning and benefits that we receive. So a brief update on our contribution to date. So last year in 2019, as the CIO, I had the honor and privilege of actually traveling to Jordan to be a keynote speaker for a one-day network event in honor of International Women's Day. I was there for three days total and worked with the group to prepare for the event as well as present, and then met with, it was all women, both elected officials and staff from the 12 different municipalities, and we had a workshop following the conference. Also, in 2019, Swamish had the opportunity to host an international delegation in Swamish, and it seems like a long time ago now that we were all able to do that, standing together in the lobby, but we had over 10 senior staff that joined, as well as Counselor Stoner and Mayor Elliott, and we had delegates from Cambodia, Jordan, and Ottawa. The contribution that continues now, number one is pandemic and crisis management support. So the great thing about this project is once the pandemic hit, which was unfortunate, they were able to pivot. And Megan Latimer has been working diligently with this project to provide tools, videos. She's been attending meetings. I know Mayor Elliott as well videoed a greeting and some messaging for the project and has been contributing. Strategic planning is a key component of building that capacity and leadership, administrative capacity for the municipalities, and that is something that, for now, I've been involved in, and certainly that could grow depending on our partnership. So really sharing our strategic planning expertise, I guess we could say, and the tools that we have used, and the strategic planning capacity in the 12 municipalities in Jordan is broad, so from zero tools, zero experience with it, to somewhat sophisticated and everything in between. And similarly, I've been providing information, attending meetings, and filming the odd video. I don't have a clip yet, but we will bring it back to council. Megan's videos are being dubbed in Arabic, and so that'll be pretty fun to watch once those have been produced. And I know that Megan's extraordinary experience in crisis management has been really instrumental for this project, and they're very appreciative of the work that she's done. The cost to Swamish is only in-kind time. So any other expensive travel, project-type expenses are all covered by Global Affairs Canada. In-kind time, we've measured based on equivalent days. So in 2019, between my travel and hosting the event and other support, it was 15, and then you'll see moving down that. 2021, if we do enter into this MOU and become a formal partnership with FCM, we're anticipating 20 days of staff time and potentially council time, depending on who gets involved, and then, of course, that would be a half-year's worth in 2022. At this time, to be perfectly frank, the staff that are involved are exempt staff, and it's not that this takes away from our time working on district projects. We tend to do it on our fortnights, on our own time. If there are meetings during the day, we make up for it in other places. So I'm sure I speak for Megan when I say it's a passion project for us, but we also recognize the benefit to Swamish as an organization, as a community, to be really working as a global partner with FCM. So with that, the recommendation is that we enter into a formal partnership. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Glenn Day. Counsel, any questions? Counselor Peddingill and Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. The one question I had looking through all this is, and I can't remember if we've been told before, but why Jordan and not somewhere else in the world?
Through the chair, FCM has a number of different countries that they are supporting with projects of this nature throughout the world. Jordan specifically created the Ministry of Municipal Affairs back in 2015, and the Canadian ambassador at the time reached out to Global Affairs Canada, and that's where that partnership specifically was created. So as Jordan decentralized their government, they sought help and support from an organization or country, I guess, that has experience in it. So that was the Jordan link with the Canadian ambassador at the time. But FCM has projects in Southeast Asia, in Africa, in Europe. Ukraine is an example, is one of the countries, so it does extend throughout the globe.
Thank you.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I just wanted to note that unfortunately, due to a glitch or typo, the link to the FCM website didn't come through in the report to council, but it's easy enough to find and highly recommended. And there, we as councillors can sign up for the newsletter. I found a very, very interesting information, and I just wanted to plant the idea, Ms. Glenn Day, that one day we can use our community force as a platform for international projects. I think there's many opportunities that might unfold there, and I was just, wanted to note how interesting the webpage and the project reports there were. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson. Counselor French?
Thanks, Chair. I'm supportive of this, and I love that we're involved. And then when I put on the shoes of an average, hard-working Swamish taxpayer, I'm envisioning that one of the questions might be, okay, great, but how do I benefit? What's in this for me as a hard-working Swamish taxpayer? And in the presentation, we heard a little bit high level of how Swamish benefits, but I'm wondering if we could take it down a few feet and get thoughts on how this benefits Swamish more broadly.
Thank you, through the chair. Just again, to reiterate that in terms of tax implications, there's no cost. The in-kind time that staff are compensated for through the district taxation ultimately is not taking away any other district work because we are doing it, for the most part, on our own over time. And in terms of a benefit to the overall community, I would say that any time that there is an opportunity for shared learning, whether it be on strategic planning, crisis management, gender and inclusion, there is always learning. It's never a play, and we continue as staff to learn as we work with other municipalities in Jordan and across Canada around the different tools. So for strategic planning as an example, there's a municipality in Saskatchewan that has provided some tools that we're looking at as staff that, oh, that's quite interesting. And then when our tools are used in Jordan for implementation, the hiccups that they have or the challenges that they have makes us, again, learn how is it that we can implement these tools better. And so it's the reciprocal learning that's really important, as well as empathy and understanding and compassion. So I'm sure Megan would probably be able to speak to this more eloquently than me, but in terms of crisis management in a country that is just getting their municipal capacity up and their ability to communicate and the gender challenges they face, and how do we get out crisis management systems? And that empathy and compassion and being able to help as well as bring that learning back, and it's always how do we improve ours as well based on what we're seeing on the ground in other countries.
Great, thanks, Chair.
Counsel, any further questions? Mayor Elliott?
I'll move the staff recommendation.
Seconded by Counselor Peddingill. Would anybody like to speak to it? Counselor Peddingill?
Yeah, thank you. Really excited by this project. I really like it. I think, you know...
I think, you know, for me, sometimes it does feel like we're in a bit of a bubble in Squamish. And I see a lot of value as we face challenges like pandemics and climate change and so on, to stay connected with the rest of the world. And I see a lot of value and hope and strength in understanding and working through these big challenges with the world. And so I think we could probably go on about this, but I do see this sort of thing really valuable. And I guess my one wish would be, as we go forward, to center it or focus on it a little more on our website and some of our various materials. And I understand we've got a lot on our plate, but would love to see more about this as it progresses. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Peddingill. Counselor Ray?
Thank you. And I'm supporting this as well. And I think this is an example of something that where we have knowledge, we can share, and we should share it. Going to the previous comment, you know, what does a citizen of Squamish gain? Personally, I think the citizen of Squamish is also a citizen of the world. And as a citizen in the world, I think we all gain when there's a shared sharing of knowledge and something that helps build better understanding between nations and between peoples. And also helps in some small way to better the standard of living in some other part of the world. I think that's the kind of thing we need to do. It reduces conflict, raises people from poverty. And as citizens of the world, we all benefit from that.
Thank you, Counselor Ray. I too will be supporting this motion. I think that this is a great opportunity, both for our community and for our staff. I want to thank the CIO for engaging in the project to date and bringing it forward for a formal partnership. In addition to what my other colleagues have mentioned in terms of benefits, I also see this as a really, one of those less tangible components to what makes us a really great place to work in terms of allowing our staff to engage in projects that allow them to teach and learn and share with other communities. And I think that that is a really important piece for staff development. That is where we know it's challenging to retain and recruit some of our staff. Providing these opportunities to them, I think, is important. It allows them to broaden their horizons beyond, as Counselor Peddingill said, sometimes we get stuck in our Squamish bubble. So without seeing any further hands, I will call the question, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Glende.
Thank you.
All right, Counsel. It is currently seven minutes after 11:00. We will take a recess and come back at 11:25. All right. Welcome back, everybody. The committee as a whole. We are on item three, council engagement strategy. We have Ms. Moore here with us. She'll be walking us through kind of what we've done to date and give us some ideas for how we might be able to increase council engagement in these challenging and trying times of COVID. So Ms. Moore, over to you.
Good morning, Counsel. Thank you, Chair. I'm Christina Moore, Director of Communications for the District of Squamish. As the Chair mentioned, I'm here today to review and discuss some public engagement opportunities in 2021 in the context of the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. As the health orders remain in place at this time, we continue to be restricted from in-person gatherings. Dr. Bonnie Henry has stressed that British Columbia shouldn't be looking for loopholes. And as local government leaders, we are working to uphold and reflect both the spirit and the intent of the provincial orders and encourage Squamish residents to do the same. We are hopeful, come the late spring, early summer, however, that we could return to some in-person engagement with the necessary safety protocols in place, similar to how we were able to evolve last year. So this is the context we bring to the table today. So I'll share my screen here, and we'll get through the presentation. Can everyone see my presentation?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. So we'll take a quick look at today. We'll look at the, whoops, how am I moving forward here? Okay, there we go. So today, we're going to take a quick look at our current situation. We've put together some thought around some principles for outreach planning that we'd like to share with you and get some feedback on. Assessing some of the things that we've done to date and look at options for future initiatives. And then I'd like to move through these slides fairly quickly, so we have plenty of time to have discussion and brainstorm at the end and get counsel's feedback. So we're in a situation where, as we know, we're approaching a year of the pandemic. You know, a virtual event is no longer a unique endeavor. It's not standing out. Everything we do these days is virtual. Even many of our holiday celebrations this year were virtual, as we've all experienced. In our personal lives and our professional lives, many, and in fact, most things have moved online. And you know, Zoom fatigue is a thing. We are competing for people's attention with every other company, brand, and organization vying for attention in the same online space. We're also seeing a lot of new pressures and stresses in personal lives. And you know, that is also another competition for people's times as they adapt and cope with the realities. And in many cases, you know, that we have seen a shift in priorities within our residents' lives and citizens in general, which we need to consider when we invite them to engage with us and really think about the topics that we wish to engage them in. So in this context, some of the principles that we have applied to bring these ideas forward to you are, let's look at areas where people are currently, rather than trying to create new scenarios and draw people to us. Let's find the people and go to them where they are already. Let's think about how we can build interactions around topics that people really care about. You know, we need them to carve some time out of their day to participate. So giving them more incentive in terms of those topic choices will help us to connect and motivate them to join us. We'd like to look at our efforts and consider how we can maximize our impact by offering multiple different ways to connect on a given topic and build on what we've already started. We have some great initiatives that have been underway since your term began. Certainly, some of them have been paused and had to be reconsidered, rethought in the context of COVID. But we have some really great nuggets that we'd like to build on and do a few things well, rather than spreading ourselves too thinly. So quickly, again, I'd like to move through these fairly quickly. But this is a bit of a combination of what we've done and also how we might be able to move forward and improve some of the things that we're already working on. So the mayor's drop-in has continued. It typically involves both the mayor and the acting mayor each month. It was outdoors when restrictions were lifted last summer. We've moved back indoors now into the virtual space. We've really seen attendance buoyed by issues. In particular, two that came to come to mind through the fall were interest in the Brackendale development by the General Store and then the campground closure. And so one of the ways that we might consider moving forward with this to really increase participation is to identify topics for discussion in advance. There's a couple of benefits to this. One is that we could invite people specifically who have interest in that area, local agencies, local subject matter experts. We could also invite key staff to share their thoughts and work as part of a discussion if a topic is identified and advanced. The Council Coffee Crawl, again, a great brand. I think we've worked it through a few incarnations. Some venues have been more successful than others. And of course, we had to completely halt this once March 2020 hit and the pandemic hit. As you know, we did try a late fall event, but with weather and changing restrictions, we really didn't get this off the ground this year. Similar to the mayor's drop-in, we do see opportunities around theming these around a particular topic. There are a number of locations in Squamish that do have outdoor covered seating. And so as we move forward into the spring and the summer and have an opportunity to bring these back, certainly those outdoor cafes would allow us to perhaps meet the safety protocols that we would need to meet in order to meet in person once again. And this idea around promoting a topic for discussion to allow us to be a bit more comprehensive with our outreach and other initiatives that are underway. Farmers markets are coming back online in mid-April. Now, they are allowed to continue to proceed, of course, based on the food market. Once gathering restrictions do lift, we, there could be, and we do see this as an opportunity to have a council presence there, perhaps once a month, rotating through in pairs. We tested this out in the fall, so can definitely improve upon signage, ensuring that council is readily recognized with name tags and signage, as mentioned. And then again, perhaps focus these appearances around certain topics and certainly topics that would reflect the farmer's market crowd. But we do, you know, they were well-attended last year. We do expect they will be attended again this year. And so if there is a compelling opportunity and topic for people to stop by and say hello, that we see that as an opportunity for council to connect. Switching gears a little bit here. Some ideas I know have been floated around, joining some of the recreation programs that exist. This really focuses on that going where the people are already going. And there was a great example that I know the mayor and Counselor Stoner and others have spoken about with regards to the summer and fall pole hiking group, where about 10 to 12 attendees, I think primarily in the 55-plus age group, got together on a regular basis and went out for a hike and went out for a walk. And so the concept of this idea is that we could identify perhaps a month in advance some of the programs, both in our recreation area and youth events, as well as potentially library events, and present those to council to essentially sign up and participate. At the moment, these, there are some programs running at the recreation center. As you know, in your own experiences, everything now is very orchestrated. There are arrows on the floor. People move in and out in single file. There isn't much opportunity for conversation or mingling. And it's certainly, again, back to the kind of the spirit of the gatherings, it's not being encouraged at this time. But again, as we move into the spring months and we start to see some of this programming and the restrictions ease up a little bit, we see this as an opportunity to try to match members of council with your interests and some of the community members to connect in a more casual way and spark up conversation. There could be opportunities in the interim, sort of in the next couple of months, around some online events. And if this was of interest, we can certainly work to identify those opportunities, create that list and share it with council, kind of two to three weeks to a month in advance for you to kind of sign up. This concept is a new concept. We're calling it the "What's Coming Up at Council" video. We are borrowing this concept or we're inspired by the example of the City of Victoria, whereby Mayor Lisa Halt publishes a video every two weeks prior to the council meetings and highlights one or two items of public interest and invites public feedback into that and really just shares out the items of the agenda. You know, we see this as being an opportunity to really connect with the community, to provide some, provide further insights into the agendas, into the heavy agendas, especially some of the items that, you know, people, we want residents to be aware of and to participate in providing feedback on. We thought the way that this could be done in a manageable way would be to commit to doing it every two weeks on a Friday morning, alternating between the mayor and the acting mayor. So Mayor Elliott would share one, would record one about every month, every four weeks. And then the acting mayor for that month would do it on the alternate two weeks. So it wouldn't be overly burdensome. We've had some great experience over the last few months with using video and quickly recording and posting the mayor's videos around the COVID pandemic. So we think that this is really doable, and it can be done from a variety of locations, depending on the comfort level of the councillor, whether it be in your home or we can work something else out as well. And then the items that we would convey each video, each two weeks, can be identified at the weekly agenda planning meeting on a Wednesday. So we put a little bit of thought into which of the many agenda items you may want to share. The key with this is to really keep it simple and high-level and invite the public to get a glimpse of what's coming up without going too heavy into the details and getting bogged down into scripting and different things. So that is the concept for this. And I can certainly, following this event, I was following this presentation, I can certainly send out a link to some of the examples from the City of Victoria, which seem to work really well. So this has been an item, podcasts has been an item that Dog does a little bit this year. I have been in front of council a couple of times, promising you that something's coming. So I appreciate your patience on this side of things. We have, we launched the podcast series, District Besides, in October 2019. Our target was four times a year. We have presented three podcasts so far to the community. The production of the podcasts, as they were first envisioned, has admittedly proven to be more challenging than we had anticipated. This is primarily due to the large number of people involved. And the pandemic and its response has also really had an impact on my team, as well as the hosts and our ability for everyone to prioritize this initiative. So we really want to move forward with this. We think it's a great concept. We know we have council support. We had great feedback from the community. We want to envision it, re-envision it in 2021 in order that we can simplify the process, allow for faster, more efficient production, and still achieve the goal that we articulated at the outset, which was to bring the community into our decision-making and bring greater understanding to the decisions and the topics that face the district. So we'd like to propose a simplified format that's more one-to-one, involving a one-to-one host-guest ratio, perhaps up to two different segments, to allow for more organic conversation on a topic and a shorter episode length. This would limit council participation to perhaps one member of council per podcast, which is a little bit different than our original format. We have been working on, but it would also, sorry, I should add, it would also ensure that we do have that third-party external guest to bring in that. third party external guest to bring in that that sort of bigger picture look at the at the topic as well. So we have been working on a series, a three episode series that is very, very close to the finish line. We've been working with community planner Matt Gunn and centralized around his work on density and community livability. The mayor has been involved in this particular series and we have, we're very close to having three podcasts ready for review. We do, we look forward to sharing this with you as a potential model for how future podcasts can be developed. And again, striking a balance between the level of detail that we're exploring across the various viewpoints, the ability to coordinate all those involved and ensuring that we're hitting the mark in terms of length so that we can attract listeners within their their walk or their daily commute or their daily tasks, which is where people tend to listen to podcasts. One of the ideas that we had back to the principles is really about how we maximize our reach with the community. And so, you know, if we align our, one of the ideas we'd like to explore with council is aligning the topic of the podcast, for example, with a topic at the mayor's drop in and then also potentially a topic at a council coffee crawl or a farmer's market appearance. This allows us to to really maximize the work that we're doing on a particular topic area and allows us to have a more fulsome conversation and give give more residents a chance to to listen and learn and for 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 council to listen and learn from the community in response and give people another reason to to attend our conversations. So we really see opportunities around maximizing the themes and coordinating the the launch and the timing of these initiatives in the marketplace. So I've spoken a bit about topics of interest. In the fall budget survey that we did back in October, November, we asked residents what they wished to hear more about. We received over 100 suggestions and these were, those suggestions were themed into roughly into these categories that you see on the screen. There's certainly the opportunity to dig back into those hundred and and sort of get more insights and specifics in terms of actual topics. But this gives you a general idea of what rose to the top in terms of people's interest, what they might hear from us, what they might like to hear from us. So here's a summary list of what I've just covered in short order. So happy to dive in with questions and and conversation here. You know, again, what we're, what we'd like to really build upon is are some some key principles in terms of going where the people already are, building interactions around topics that people care about, giving them more incentive to carve out time in their day to participate, maximizing our impact by offering multiple ways to connect on a given topic and then build on what we've already started. Let's, let's, let's work on these and builds to do a few things really well, rather than spreading ourselves too thinly. So hopefully that provides some stimulation for discussion. That concludes my presentation and I'll I'll pass it over to the chair for council questions and input discussion. I perhaps leave this on the screen as well. I can flip between these two, two slides here.
Thank you so much, Ms. Moore. I think that's a really helpful presentation to put us in context of where we've been and where we're trying to go. So council, any questions, comments, councillor French?
Thanks, Chair. And I'm particularly interested in podcasts. And I'm curious to know about numbers, numbers of downloads, numbers of listens in in our first go around at it. Can I get some thoughts on, did the numbers meet expectations? Were there any surprises? Just any information about how many people are actually participating in that format?
That is a great question. And now I apologize, but I don't have the numbers at my fingertips, but I will see how quickly I can get them from my team while we're talking here. I think they're listening. Let me just, the other question is, or sorry, the the comments that I will say is, you know, we did hear really great feedback in terms of the in terms of the, in terms of the content and in terms of the 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 depth of topic. I think that what we did really well and what we heard back people was that we, you know, it was very highly produced. We were very pleased with the production. We used a professional studio here in town. We have great resources here in town to use. It was before COVID, so we were all in the studio. There was, you know, we did editing. There was a guest, there was a host, we had two guests. We had multiple guests over two or three different segments. And then, of course, we had two council members with each in assigned to each podcast. And then we had the wonderful heritage moments that councillor Anderson did that provided some great insights and backgrounds. We were really proud of the podcasts. I think the biggest challenge was that they were just so involved that it was really challenging for us to keep up the pace and to and to bring that many people together. So, you know, balancing how we can keep some of those really great parts of it, but find a way that it's it's manageable for us moving forward as we balance out the other priorities that we have. So I might circle back if you don't mind councillor French while I'm waiting for some of the numbers. Okay, sorry, I'll here, I have them already. We had 627 listens for all three podcasts. The affordable housing one was the first one that we launched and we had 279 listeners. The dog, off-leaks dogs, 165 and the COVID, the COVID response, 176 listeners. So pretty good, considering they were, you know, close to an hour in length.
Okay, great. And I'm follow up, just from the report, I'm not clear moving forward. If you're looking for council participation or you're going to keep it at staff and or guest and maybe you can talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, great, thank you. Through the chair, you know, when we first launched the podcast, we wanted to take people behind the scenes of the decision making and share some of the nuances that council considers in the decisions. We felt that the podcasts were a great opportunity to to do that in a way we actually, we're actually in people's ears for for 30, 45 minutes and provides more of that context that we can't get across in a social media share or or a chief ad, a newspaper ad. So we wouldn't, we don't want to lose that. And so, you know, finding a balance between a simplified format with an external guest to bring in that outside perspective, but also ensure that council has that voice. One way we thought we could do this, open to council's feedback, of course, would be to rotate and have just one council, a member of council on participate in each podcast. So it would be for each person would have an opportunity to to participate. You know, if we, if we rotated through, it would be sort of once, roughly once a year, if we, if we could produce seven podcasts a year and and have that opportunity to bring that council perspective to the table. Each person would represent the the council as a whole. So that that's where we're thinking we might be able to strike a balance but open to feedback as well.
Okay, great, thanks, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Anderson.
Thank you. Of all of the media that we've been discussing, the one that is the old fashioned one, the one that growing up in this community, we always look for the newspaper for a column from an individual councillor or an individual chamber of commerce director was also a longtime practice. And this goes back years and years. It has come and gone. But my question really is that have, has the communications team give some consideration to a potential medium or opportunities for written columns or messaging from individual councillors? An obvious forum is the local newspapers. And it's, it occurs to me that they do remain a popular venue or a regularly read or paid attention to venue from people who are interested in municipal and community affairs. So written media.
Thank you councillor councillor Anderson through the chair. Yes, that has been an a tactic that council has participated in in previous councils. We've, we have had a monthly column in the chief newspaper, probably up to about three years ago. And then it the 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 interest dropped off in it. Whether I guess, I think the, I I have, I'm not, I'm struggling with remembering exactly what the, what the the main challenges were. I think there were, there was sort of a mix of interest from the council side as to what, the way it worked was that each councillor would take a turn and write a column. And so there was interest in, or there was a mixed level of interest in whether or not that was something that all of the councillors wanted to do. And so we had some challenges, meaning some deadlines in some cases. And I think there was sort of a natural attrition away from from confirming that space. It's not, it isn't to say that it isn't an option moving forward. And certainly the chief is is open to receiving letters to the editor. As we know, Mayor Elliott submitted a letter just a couple of weeks ago that was printed as a letter to the editor. So that is something that we could consider re igniting and and speaking to our local newspapers around how to, how, if they would be open to that as well. So yep, that is an option that we could pursue.
Thank you for that background.
Mayor Elliott had something she wanted to add to that contact.
So Ms. Moore is right, there was mixed interest on the last council and actually participating. But also at the beginning of this term, the chief spoke to our communication staff about going in a different direction. And so we haven't done them since this term started. And so that was also a choice of the newspaper, is my recollection in terms of my early conversations when I came on board as mayor.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments, council, councillor Peddingill?
Yes, thank you. A few things, just I like seeing your list of of rec related things where where interactions are happening and just give another plug. The library has some reading groups. I've been attending one of those, so it's a good chance to to talk with people on an ongoing basis online. I have participated, some different groups in town have been doing some talks on diversity, equity and inclusion. And I've seen some other councillors there as well. So those are opportunities and it makes me think if there's value in maintaining and soliciting when groups are having online meetings, AGMs, any sort of public meeting to let us know. And is there a way we could maintain even just as a sort of an online spreadsheet? Councillors, if we can sort of let each other know which ones we're planning on attending and and try and as best we can, keep a running list of what's available and sort of join the the online meetings that are already happening. Strikes me as as useful. Just one other thought I had. And it's not a fully formed thought, but looking at the topics of interest and and some of those are a little bit contentious. And it made me reflect back to, I was on the LNG committee with councillor Race and Mayor Elliott. They were councillors at the time I was not. But what was really good about that, I thought, was it's a very contentious topic, but there was an outside facilitator. And as I recall, the the group wasn't tasked with a decision. It was really based on learning and developing some degree of shared understanding things. And I think, you know, when we get to a public hearing, there's often already a recommendation. There's information, but there's a recommendation from staff about this is what the decision should be. And then everyone who speaks, they're very focused on advocating for against a particular decision. And and it it makes for a significantly adversarial process. And and I do come back to the idea, is there an opportunity with these topics of interest somewhere earlier in our meeting process? And being very clear that it's not a formal part of the the reading process or public hearing. But, you know, there's a facilitator and here's a community, here's where we sort of learn about this topic and develop a shared understanding. And I just felt that the the LNG committee model was was very helpful in that. And I see, even if it's on Zoom or something, something along those lines when we get to these topics of interest would be, I think, quite beneficial.
Before you jump in, Ms. Moore, I'm just, I I just want to reflect on some of the process that we do have around each of our projects that do come forward. They typically come forward with a communication plan and at which point council does have the opportunity to discuss how that's going to work and what level of engagement we're going to have with the community. So there is always that opportunity councillor Peddingill, when those projects come forward. The zoning is a good example where staff did do a number of webinars in advance of the actual zoning reading. And I know that some council attended those, so just to put that in context. And I have, Ms. Arthur has come to the table, so I'll go to her.
And if it, if it's a particular development, there's a public information that's put on, public information, meaning for the larger, more controversial ones by the developers themselves, that's not part of our process. But our process for public engagement around an OCP amendment or a public hearing is a statutory one and it's done by the planning department. It's not run by communication. And it's, it follows our procedure, development procedure by law and the legislation. So it's all laid out in there. It it's sort of not an opportunity to have a community dialogue outside of first reading, second reading, and then the public hearing.
Thanks for that contact, councillor Peddingill.
Yeah, and and just to clarify, I'm not suggesting we change the the formal process, but sort of adding, I guess, for lack of a better term, an informal step, sort of this information sharing early piece. I understand that developer may have some obligation, but there again, I think it sets with some of those, they tend to be adversarial because the developer has something they want to do often and they're trying to convince the public and the public's trying to convince them otherwise. And and so it's not, it's not generally appropriate. I understand with our zoning, sometimes we do already do something very similar to this. I guess I'm just trying to highlight, especially with some of the things on this topic of interest list. I think there may be some sort of opportunity for some sort of facilitated information sharing. Let's kind of develop a shared understanding sort of meeting that could be on Zoom. And I just sort of see that as a potential benefit over and above some of the processes we already have.
Thanks, Moore.
Thank you through the chair. To build on on what councillor Stoner mentioned as well, I think, speaking to your ideas councillor Peddingill, the density conversation and and topic is perhaps an example of what you're speaking about. The planning department has done quite a number of of outreach efforts with the community on different aspects of that to try to raise overall kind of awareness and 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 understanding. The podcast that I spoke about earlier, the podcast series is is also designed to do that. And I know there is some work that's being done on density and health moving forward as well. So I think that's the idea around this, you know, let's like focusing in on on a topic, I'm really helping to raise the overall level of awareness and understanding and conversation to try to bring the community along with us on our decision making, on on council's decision making and also, you know, raise that. And also, you know, raise that, raise that level of, of interest and understanding to give people peace of mind, to listen more to their, listen to their feedback and try to address concerns as we go through. So outside of some of the regulatory process, I do see that this, these initiatives could help us do that.
Ms. Moore, I would also just add councillor Peddingill, that there's, I think that there's also two components here. Like our, our topic for today is around council engagement strategy, which does start to speak to some of these topics or project specific items. But it's a little bit higher level in that in terms of what is kind of our attendance and, and interaction with the community. And then, as I mentioned, we have process around what is the level of engagement that we expect on a project by project basis. And if there are topics that we think warrant deeper conversation, then I think we also have the opportunity to discuss what a committee of council or a staff committee might look like. If it needs to be more in-depth than just a, an engagement session. I saw Mayor Elliott and then I saw another hand councillor Anderson will come to you after.
I haven't heard any councillors narrow down the options, so maybe I'll start with what I feel provides our best access. And so certainly I will continue with the mayor's drop-in. I think that the, what's coming up on council videos are a great way to quickly reach a lot of people and increase engagement on specific topics that are coming up. I think, I, like, I'm willing to test the podcast idea for another year to make sure that it can be streamlined. I know that RMOW records theirs through Mountain FM. And so I don't know if there's a, a different model that we need to consider that's more efficient or not. Maybe theirs is just as labor intensive as ours. But the other one I think that has interest to me is the, using the farmer's market around specific issues. So I'm not sure that I would do it monthly, but I would certainly do it around specific topics that are coming up that we want people engaged on. And then finally, just building off something that councillor Peddingill said, when staff are holding open houses, those never get into our calendar. It's up to us to be aware of them and self-select into them. And so if staff were actually inviting us and putting it in our council calendar, then we'd be aware of every single community engagement event that our staff were doing. And we can't, like, that's a simple thing that doesn't cost us time or money. But as councillor Peddingill says, ensures that hopefully at least one, two or three of us is, is attending because we can see them in advance. So I think that's another simple thing that, you know, going where the people already are, certain topics would be helpful.
Thank you. And thank you for starting to narrow down some options. Councillor Anderson.
I have a question regarding our use of public survey questionnaires. We are doing it currently for a budget, for example, and various departments engage in these all the time. I assume that the communications department is involved in logistical support behind these survey questionnaires. But I'm wondering if I could ask if there is a monitoring and working together with the department so that we can optimize advertisement and the duration that these are available to the public? I think they're quite important. I just wondered whether you have some ongoing oversight as to how we're doing in terms of participation and ways we can improve participation in these surveys.
Through the chair, thank you for that question councillor Anderson. Yes, we do have oversight. We are the, the kind of final point whereby the survey comes through communications and is, is vetted. And then we are involved in, in helping to share that survey when it goes live. Timing of it, we timed, we, we don't always control the timing of it. Often times, the, the, the number of weeks that a survey can be available to the public is dependent upon other factors in terms of when work is, is due back at council. You know, time for analysis, those kinds of things. We, our preference and our, our best practice, sorry, it's probably not even a best practice, but our absolute minimum requirement is that a, a survey be available for at least two full weeks. And that allows us to run through a couple of cycles of our Friday Eve newsletter, our Thursday chief ads and our, our social media outreach and website. So that's a, that's a minimum that we aim for and more is better. Generally, when we run surveys for longer, we get more, more response.
Thank you for your comment.
And I, I will add to it. It really does depend on the topic of the survey. You know, we've had some really, really big participation on, on things like the recreation center. And less so on, on something that's more, you know, a little bit more challenging to, to grasp or, or understand or maybe not as relevant in our, in people's day-to-day lives. So certainly the subject matter impacts the number of, of comments that we receive.
Thank you.
Thank you. And councillor Anderson, do you have any preferences on the options that were presented or other ideas that you'd like to put as kind of top suggestions for the coming year for council engagement strategy?
I'll only offer, I can hear Stoner that I, I think that the new tactics that will be deployed to attract attention, build interactions, I thought it was a very interesting slide outlining some of those tactics. And I'd sort of wait to see how these are going to work and I'm optimistic that, that they are going to work. One in particular that I have, I found disappointing is the council crawl. However, I think that the council crawl and the farmer's market, those types of interactions will be better supported by the new strategy behind them. And so I'm, I'm, I'm likely to, in fact, keep all our options open at this time. Thank you.
Yeah. And I do want to clarify that we, we aren't proposing that we're going to move forward with all of these. I think staff is looking for some direction on which ones we may prefer to move forward on. If they try and do all of them, I think we'll run our communication staff extremely thin. So they are looking for some prioritization from us on which ones we would like to move forward with.
May I ask if we could then have the slide in front of us again? Thank you.
Ms. Moore will work on getting that up. Council, any other thoughts? Yeah, councillor Peddingill and then councillor French.
Yeah, thank you. Just reflecting a bit more, I, I think I don't, I'm not as favorable towards podcasts and written articles and so on on council because it's, it's a one-way communication out. And it sort of leaves you to social media to a large degree for any follow-up. And that's a bit of a dumpster fire and not super constructive in my opinion at this point in our history. So I, I think I tend more towards the things where there's two-way interaction. I think I started thinking about, you know, well, what about an online town hall? And that's where I think you then get sort of venting and some of those adversarial conversations. And, and so I think that's why I started to really come back to this idea of a facilitated, shared understanding type of thing. So all that to say, I, I really like the idea of some of these broader group information topic of interest discussions, however we do them. And then, you know, farmer's market, council coff- coffee crawls, attending online meetings, these sorts of things where there can be a lot more back and forth dialogue. Anything that, that maximizes that is preferable to me.
Thank you councillor Peddingill. I have councillor French and councillor Race.
Thank you. And I just wanted to follow up on some of the mayor's thoughts about the podcast and particularly comparing to Whistler's efforts on this front. Based on what I hear, having functioned in the realm, I think that the Whistler podcasts has far less editing than our project and that's a big factor in efficiency. The Whistler podcast tends to be the mayor and one guest. A lot of the time, they've been bringing in a second councillor to some of the podcasts as like a co-host. But again, sticking for the most part with just one guest and it tends to be really long-form. So it's a long conversation that requires little to no editing, but for at the beginning and the end. So just circling back to my own thoughts on the future of the podcast, with the three episodes that we've got planned, I support that we make those happen and then pay particular attention to the numbers. Because if we're only reaching 150 or fewer people with the podcast, in my mind, that is not an effective use of our staff and council time to convey messaging. And, and I would be interested to hear what the Whistler numbers are and compare their numbers to our numbers. Cause I, I've listened to, I, I believe all of the Whistler podcasts and I find them really engaging. And maybe a little bit more engaging than the podcasts that, of the District of Squamish. And then that's not to diminish the work on the District of Squamish podcast because they were good. Just simply indicating that my own interest in the Whistler format and how they're doing their work, it really catches my ear. And I, I don't think I would support going back to newspaper columns. I recognize some of the challenges of previous councils when I was in that world. And well, that's maybe not the case with this council. There certainly have been previous counselors who have had real challenges with written form. And, and finding a way to write a column was a huge deal for some of the previous counselors who just didn't do well in that format. So yeah, I, I'm, I'm not super excited about the idea of going back to newspaper columns. And then coffee crawl versus farmer's market, I, I would take the farmer's market format, I think, over the coffee crawls. Because my own experience with the coffee crawls was that they were not super well-attended. Very few people came to the ones that, that I was a part of. And I would also put low priority on video updates. I just think that we could better use our time and energy into attendance at farmer's markets and maybe getting into some recreation programs. Thanks.
Thank you councillor French. Over to councillor Race.
Thank you. So I also like the mayor's drop-in. I like attending that with the mayor. Times I've been there this term, we've had several really good discussions. Coffee crawl, I tend to agree with councillor French. I mean, the ones I've been at, if we had two people there, it was crowded. They just don't get, seem to get the, the number of people you might hope to have there. I like the idea of the farmer's market because there you will get a two-way conversation, yakaway on a variety of different interests or, or topics. And whether we focus them or whether we just have people there to chat, I think it can work either way because people will just say what's on their mind regardless anyway. So, but I think that's a good way of, of getting a face-to-face with people when we're allowed to do that. Videos, I've only done that. Topics. And even though as a councillor, we were only doing them twice a year, it's amazing how much of a challenge that turned out to be to find something to write about. And I was one of the people that lost interest before it was actually discontinued. So I'm not wild about that one, even if the paper was prepared to go to it. You know, the, the LNG committee that councillor Pet meal talked about was, I think, almost a one-off in the sense that it's a huge project, it was multifaceted. And it was entirely brand-new to this area in the sense that, speaking for myself, I mean, before this started, I barely knew what the letter stood for. And so it really was gathering information, not just for counselors, but also for our staff. And it had many, many different facets to it, from, from the huge ships down to DFO issues, all sorts of them. And so it was, it was, I don't, I'm sure that that is a workable model in almost any other format. We had some other comparable project come along, or comparable issue. And there's a cost to that, you know, it costs money to have a facilitator there. And, and then the question is who can come to it and how do you control the conversation and so forth? You have 400 people in a room and they all want to start talking, it just, it's not going to get to anywhere. So, so those are my thoughts on that. I'll stop there. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Hertford. We cannot hear you at the moment. Oh, no. Hey, you can type your, your order of preference in the chat box. And councillor Anderson, I'm going to come back to you and see if you have any thoughts on.
Good chair, are you ready for me now?
Yes, please go ahead.
Well, my, I was intrigued by your, enlightened by councillor French's background as to some of these media, given his experience. But I'm going to check off mayor's drop-in, farmer's market, recreational program participation. And I would like to suggest, as Ms. Moore already has, that that also include cultural and, I had another term here too, but let's consider that broadly, those programs and podcasts over video for some of the reasons that councillor Race has just highlighted. And that'll be it for me. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Anderson. I'll just throw my two cents in here. Definitely appreciate the mayor's drop-in with the acting mayor. I think that is a great component. It doesn't necessarily broaden council's full engagement with the community. So I think that that is one piece of the puzzle. I, I actually have really appreciated the council coffee crawls in the past. Although they have been low attendance, I think with consistent frequency of, of holding them, it just is good, a good image that council is out there in the community and available for discussion on a regular basis. Obviously, we can't do that with COVID, but I do think that there's benefit there. I'm happy to intermingle that with, with the farmer's market tent when the farmer's market is running. So I kind of see those as, as going tangentially in the spring and summer. I am cognizant that those are not going to start up for a while. And so council engagement is, is pretty limited at the moment. And so that's why I am very supportive of the council video of what's coming up. I think it's difficult for our community to keep tabs on what's on the council agenda. And although staff do a great job of posting the agenda in advance, it's not always the most digestible format to read. And so I think a quick video update would be really helpful for folks. So I would put that high on my priority list. Although I appreciate the idea of going to where the people are with the recreation programming, I am also cognizant of, of kind of crashing their party. So if there's something happening at the library, I don't necessarily want all of council to show up just because it's somewhere that we can be. So appreciate me putting that in calendars, but don't see that as necessarily our area for engagement. And I am, I'm curious to see what the new podcast format looks like. I do think it is a, it is a good opportunity in some ways, but it seems like it's really intensive on staff. And so I'm cognizant of, of moving that forward and curious to see what the next three episodes look like. And if that can be streamlined, then great, but I'm also willing to let that one go. And we have councillor Hertford. Thank you very much. And I'll just read these out for him. So yes, on the mayor's drop-in. Coffee crawl needs more signage and staff to be successful, he thinks. Definitely yes on the farmer's market and super support what's coming up with council videos. There we go. Thank you councillor Hertford for finding alternative ways of getting your voice heard during council meetings. Go ahead councillor Peddingill.
Oh, thank you. Just councillor Stone or something you said reminded me, most of my coffee crawls were poorly attended except for when we had one at Quest. I think you and I had 30-some-odd students, which just, you know, makes me think, regardless of what we call it, if you find somewhere like the, where the students are or the farmer's market, that sort of thing can be really beneficial. So maybe we don't need to restrict ourselves to the farmer's market, but maybe we do need to be very thoughtful about where this sort of engagement happens.
Thank you. That was, that was probably the most well-attended one. I also had one at the ledger. We had over 15 people, I think, with councillor Anderson. So there have been some, if there are hot topics in the community. We are over time, Ms. Moore. some, if there are hot topics in the community. We are, over time, Ms. Moore, I realize that wasn't fully succinct in terms of giving you specific direction, but do you feel like you have enough to go on at this point? Or would you like something more concise?
I think, I took a fair bit away from that, and I think that we can move forward. I know there's a bit of division in terms of, you know, votes. I guess maybe one question I would have back to council is, you know, if there are initiatives where not all seven of you wish to participate, is, are you okay with that? You know, if three or four of you wanted to really do the videos, but two or three of you didn't, is that okay for us to move forward with, or would you want everybody to participate?
I see a few nodding heads, a thumbs up. I think generally, we're okay if a majority want to go ahead and participate, and people can opt out.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for your time today, Ms. Moore.
And likewise, thank you for yours.
All right, council. We have one more item on our agenda. At the beginning of the meeting, we amended it to add item four, which is the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program grant. And I'm just going, ah, we actually have staff. I was going to read out the memo, but if we have Ms. Gunn on the line, may want to speak to this, that'd be great. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Can you see me all right?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So I am Dora Gunn. I'm a transportation planner with the District of Squamish. Thank you so much for fitting in this late addition to the agenda. So staff are proposing to apply for the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program, the COVID-19 Resilience Infrastructure Grant, under the Act of Transportation Infrastructure category. These projects are 100% funded. However, they do have some challenging timelines. They plan to announce the successful applicants in the spring, and then they require construction to be completed by December of this year. The project that we're proposing is to light a section of the corridor trail from the Mamquam Bridge north to Mamquam Road. So that's the part of the corridor trail that runs initially along the highway and then kind of beside the golf course. It's about 850 meters long, that section. And it would involve installation of conduit bases and then approximately 23 light poles and fixtures. So providing lighting along the corridor trail was identified as a priority during consultation for the Act of Transportation Plan, and it was also a short-term recommendation in that plan. The lighting will enhance the safety and comfort of the trail, particularly in the darker winter months. The total cost of the project and the amount we propose to apply for is about $335,000. An additional note, there is a second corridor trail lighting project that's proposed in the 2021 budget. That's through DCC funds. That project will provide lighting from Finch to the Adventure Center. And the two projects are independent from one another, so we don't, we can do one or the other, or, well, we plan to do the one that's already in the budget. But the second one isn't dependent on that one, or vice versa. We possibly might build them together. We'll leave that up to the capital projects manager to decide if we get the funding. And if we can build them both in 2021, it will result in a lit connection between Garibaldi Village and downtown. So it would be a really great achievement for us this year. So that's all I have to say. I do, I'm not sure if you have the recommendations in front of you, or whether it'd be helpful if I put that up on a slide, or if there's any questions.
If you could pop them up on a slide, that would actually be helpful, because I'm not sure all of, or all of council have it.
I don't seem to have the option to share content available. Oh, there we are. Okay.
Well, Ms. Gunn's getting that up. Council, any questions? Yeah, Mayor Elliott?
Is there anything preventing us from applying for both sections of lighting to this fund? Or is there a limit?
There is a limit. We didn't want, because we'd already put it in the budget one way, we didn't want to try to change that at this point. But it actually could be possible. I'd have to check with Jesse Morewood on that.
And then one would stay in the budget pending this decision, and the other one was totally dependent on this grant funding. But if we could get the whole thing paid for, wouldn't that be better?
You know, I think I'm going to have to take that away and look into that some more. I don't have an immediate answer to that. Now, we don't have, I don't have a lot of time to do that. So I don't know if Gary or Robin are on the call and might be able to speak to that. Not sure.
Robin is shaking her head.
Okay.
Because she does not know. So maybe something, Mr. Buxton, you disappeared. Do you have something you may want to add?
Yeah, I just think the complication there is just a matter of how we reflect the funding in the budget documentation. If we're able to make the grant application for the, for both projects, then we are going to have to go back into the budget and adjust the funding to make sure that if we get the grant, we can spend it. So that's probably the larger problem, if it's, if the grant will accommodate both projects. But Ms. Gunn can certainly.
Would we then have the Finch to Adventure Center one in there twice, Gary? Because we'd have, we have to have it in, we still have to keep it in under DCC, right? We couldn't take it out, or else we couldn't do that. But then we also have it in, can we have something in the budget twice?
So I wonder if what we should do with the recommendation here is that staff submit a grant funding application for corridor trail lighting through the Canada Infrastructure Program. And leave the, leave the motion generic. And we can, we can resolve these matters through the budgeting and funding process. But just take, take a generic motion.
Yeah. I don't mean to complicate, except that because that Finch to Adventure Center is coming out of DCC, it's not a task, which made me think, maybe there's a way, I'm seeing to apply for the whole thing and guarantee at least that that portion from Finch to the Adventure Center. So yeah, I agree with the direction of to just make the resolution generic.
Great, that we can do. I had a quick question, just in terms of the number of applications we can put in for the COVID-19 Resilience Infrastructure Stream, because we, I believe we approved a grant application for the Jimmy Jimmy judge flu rewatering project last week that was also going to this grant. So I'm just curious, if there's a limit there?
There is a limit. There's two different streams. There's this stream that we're talking about today, and then there's another stream which is related to flood protection. So David Rilson, I believe, applied under that stream. So we're allowed one under each of the streams.
Thank you. Council, any other questions? Counselor Pettingill?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, with the change to the first clause of the recommendation, if we drop the second clause, and my understanding is staff doesn't think there's going to be extra costs, and if there were, we'd have to come back and modify the budget anyway. So I'm wondering if we just, makes sense to just move the first clause?
I'll jump in through the chair. That is actually fairly standard, my recollection is that's fairly standard verbiage that the grantor requires to be in the motion. So yeah, we don't particularly like it from that point of view, but it's sort of a, it's sort of a standard part of the application, if you want to get considered.
Thank you. Counselor French?
Thanks, Chair. I'm just looking for reassurance that this lighting program is night-sky friendly.
Yes, absolutely. We've been doing a lot of review of our lighting standards, and night sky, dark sky is something that we absolutely are striving for and is planned in this project.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, council? Not seeing any. Anybody like to move the recommendation? Move by Mayor Elliott.
I'm going to move that we removed the word from Mamquam Bridge, Mamquam Road in the resolution.
Great. So the amended resolution reads that staff submitted grant funding application for the corridor trail lighting project through the Canada Infrastructure Program, COVID-19 Resilience Infrastructure Stream, and that the District of Squamish supports the project and commits any associated ineligible costs and cost overrun. Seconded by Counselor Herford. Any comments? Not seeing any. I'll call the question. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much for bringing that to us last minute and getting us in under the grant application timeline. With that, council, that is the end of our agenda. Can I have a motion to terminate? Moved by Mayor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Herford. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.